Good morning, everyone. This is our regular county commissioner meeting for September 8th. We're holding it in the agricultural building this week because there's some repairs going on the elevator in the main building and we wanted to make sure that public had access. Before we get going, Dallas, could you provide an invocation and lead us in the pledge?
Father in heaven, how good it is to be here. Father, to take some moments and reflect on you. And Father, you as our creator, as our guide, Father is the one who loves and cares for us. And we look around our world and our country and we realize that we need that. We need that time with you. We need that time of your reassurance that you're still in control when there's turmoil and chaos going on all over. So, Father, we just pray that we cling to you in times of trouble and that we turn to you. We know that you will deliver us and we thankful for that. Just now, as we enter into this meeting, we pray for a good meeting, time of decorum, of agreement, of moving the county forward. While we do also pray that you'll be with our first responders, our law enforcement, our fire and medical. Fathers, they serve us. May you protect them. We also are thankful and think of our county employees who are out on the roads on a daily basis. We just pray for protection for them as well. Father, guide us in all that we do. May we always be searching your will for our lives in the county. It's in Christ I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dallas. So, the time is now 9:04. We'll call the meeting to order and could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Payton, here.
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 Okay. First item of business we have is approval of the agenda. Accept a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. First item of business is the consent agenda. Accept a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Elected official department head staff report. Sherry, do you have anything? Yes.
Good morning, Commissioner. Sherry Hewlett, Elbert County Treasurer and Public Trustee. I've informed you that I wanted to inform the citizens of our annual tax lien sale. It will be a live auction this year, scheduled for November 16th. It'll be in the VOCC room at the admin building. We do have this room reserved as an alternative if we need to, if things get bad and we need a little more space. So, we do have this room reserved. The alternate date, if we have a blizzard or some inclement weather, will be November 23rd, same locations. It'll, the sale itself will start at nine. Registration will start at eight. However, we're encouraging investors to register, pre-register, and the registration form, the W-9 form and the declaration compliance form is all on my website. So, if you just go to the treasurer website and go to tax lien sale, you'll see all those documents there, as well as a procedural document that they can read through. I will be advertising the mobile homes, personal property and state assessed, starting September 23rd. That'll be a one-time publication. And then the real property will advertise for three consecutive weeks, starting October 14th, in the Elbert County News. But otherwise, if any investors have any questions, please give us a call. Ed Kovitz will be conducting the auction again this year, so we're looking forward to a live one. We had the online last year, which went very well, but we're looking forward to doing a live auction again this year, so. And just so citizens know, even though you pre-register or register, that doesn't mean you have to buy anything. You're certainly welcome to come and observe, just to see how the process works. So, again, if there's any questions, give us a call. And, oh, one other thing, if you do pre-register, they can drop it off in our office at the sub-building. They can email it to us or mail it. But if you mail it, you want to make sure you have enough time for us to get it. So, we just, hopefully by pre-registering, it'll cut down on the time we have in the morning, because it gets kind of crazy in the mornings, so. Public trustee side, about the same. We're up to eight foreclosures now. It's not horrible. You know, probably about the same as what we had last year, so. But other than that, everything's going good. Do you have any questions?
Anything? No? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Dallas, did you have anything? Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you. And I know you're on the schedule later, so. Sam, did you have anything? Okay. Thank you. So, that, we'll move on to citizen public comment. My understanding is we didn't have anybody that emailed requesting to be called or sent any comments in. Okay. So, within the room, do we have anybody that would like to make public comment? This is for items that aren't on the agenda. Okay. Seeing none, I will close public comment at this time and we'll move to discussion First we have is an update on the economic development portion of the website from Slate Communications. I think this is being done remotely, so. Okay. So, we'll take a quick recess while we're getting that queued up. Oh, okay, we won't. We'll just sit for two minutes.
Hello, this is Ryan. Hello, this is Ryan.
Ryan, we can hear you.
Yeah. Yes, I'm here.
All righty. Yes, Commissioner Richardson. So, we've got the slide deck queued up. I'm not sure if you're driving it from your end or...
I am.
Okay, I guess we are from here, so just let us know when you want to move forward.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, thank you for the time this morning. Yeah, so I'm not going to be driving anything and fortunately, there's not too many visuals we're going through.
Okay.
So, I think what you probably have up is maybe, is it the website?
Yes. It's the, kind of, the homepage of the area with the, looks like a picture of independents. We have strength in numbers, room to grow, and we're on your team.
Okay. Great. Great. Yeah, that's exactly where you should all be. So, what I wanted to do is just briefly talk about how we got to this point. I'm sure Mark has been checking in, but one of the things that I wanted to review is just the priorities that we have with the economic development marketing for Elbert County. So, we have three priorities and this will, you know, essentially be reflected in the website and then I'll review the priorities and the key messages. So, with the priorities, our number one priority is making sure that we increase awareness of Elbert County as an approachable organization, making sure that people know that Elbert County is open for business and bringing in new business. So, that approachability is going to be really important. So, making sure that whatever we do presents, it has that general warmth, that we are connected and we're ready to connect with you. The second priority is to just engage new potential businesses, and this would be through paid and free marketing platforms. So, we're going to use that, utilize everything from LinkedIn to, you know, other types of social media and then potentially some paid advertising as well. And then also, you know, something that is very important is just to make sure that we maintain and foster those current relationships that you have in the county with businesses. So, you know, making sure that we're really focusing on retention and expansion. And so, what we want to do is we want to have this website that encompasses all of that. It's, Elbert County is open for business. Elbert County is your resource, so if you are looking to expand, this website is a portal to kind of get you there and then also connect with Mark.
Great. Thanks.
And then, and then essentially, strategies, well, I guess we can talk about key messaging here, the strength in numbers. What that means is that Elbert County does have the workforce and it does have existing complementary industries. So, Elbert County has the ability to potentially match new businesses with current businesses. And so, how to help those partnerships and how to show that there is that workforce in the county. Secondly, our messaging is room to grow. So, you know, when you look at the multiple transportation hubs that just surround the county, from I-7 to I-25, to some of the state highways, to the railroad, and then, you know, three nearby airports from Centennial, TIA and Colorado Springs, you really have the ability to make it easy for people to move in and out of Elbert County, you know, whether it is a manufacturing industrial or some, you know, technology-based business. They have the ability to move around quite a bit, and I think that's really, really crucial. Also, you know, the affordability of Elbert County in contrast to surrounding counties and the region. And then, the "we're on your team" piece of that, you know, again, it's really important that Mark is out there, that Mark's face is out there, that people know that, you know, whether they're going to him or where they're going to, you know, the commissioners, your group, you are available, you're willing to help them, you're willing to support them. So, that's going to be crucial. I think, you know, if you look at a lot of other communities, they run into that issue of they're having to go through a rigmarole. The development review process can take forever, so really trying to make sure that if you're looking to bring in a new business, that process is laid out there in the website, that it's really pretty intuitive and straightforward. So, what we'll do is, since you do have the website up, I'll just kind of review our thinking behind the actual structure and design of it. So, really, we have a few key elements when we put together a website like this for economic development, is we want to show that there is life in Elbert County, that there is a lot going on from, you know, residential development to commercial development, that there's property available. So, that's really important. So, we want to show these great visuals of this is a, this is a county that does have room to grow, responsible growth. Then, we also, secondly, we want to make sure that we bring in the actual character of the county within the website. So, how do we take the existing Elbert County website, the brand colors, bring it in that economic development, but we want to make sure that it's modern. We want to make sure that it has that character of like, we are a rural county, we are a county of, you know, blue collar, hard workers, but we also have, you know, the ability to be this bedroom community. So, we want to kind of embrace that more western country lifestyle, innovative life, yeah, innovative and technology, and then also just the Elbert County brand. And so, what we did is we, of course, incorporated the core key colors of Elbert County, which is the yellow wheat color and then the orangish-red color. One of the things that we want to do with websites normally is just kind of really put that beautiful image up front. So, what you're looking at here is a hero banner image that's actually going to be a video. So, we were out there a few weeks ago, we got a bunch of drone video of some new developments, some land that's, and property that's available, some Main Street video. So, we have a good amount to work with. And so, what we'll see at this top page banner is there's going to just be a rotating videos of different aspects of Elbert County. And that we have strength in numbers, room to grow, and we're on your team is going to be that consistent message that will be over the video as the video's playing. That's great for desktop, when we go to mobile, it'll probably just be a still image, just because if we try to put video on a mobile, it's going to be very slow to load. And so, that's initially what people see up front, but at the very top, we have the top-level navigation, fast facts, doing business, Elbert County living. It's really crucial that we speak in business owner developer terms, making sure that we have an approachable language. And so, what we really want to do is we want to make sure that people can kind of easily get to the interior pages that they want to get to. So, if they go to fast facts, that's going to take them page that has, you know, a listing of available properties, link to some of the available properties. It's going to have infographics on, you know, what your workforce breakdown is. It's going to have infographics on, you know, your median household incomes, average home cost, is anything that if you were a potential business owner, you'd want to know, like, can I build there? Are my employees going to be able to find housing? Can I, is it going to have the lifestyle I want? Is there going to be a golf course nearby? So, just things like that, that they would take into consideration when they're interested in Elbert County. Doing business, of course, is going to be a little bit more of the dry resource material, but of course, you know, if you're that serious, you're going to start looking at, you know, just some of the really detailed Excel sheet figures of what it does take to do business here. And then also, you know, breaking down the development review process, so some more of that technical information. So, if you are willing to make that next step, you'll probably click through to this page. And then you'll contact Mark and Mark will walk them through how to either start a business in Elbert County or expand their current business in Elbert County. Elbert County living, now that's going to be the, you know, I call it more of the fluff. It's going to be that brochure for Elbert County. It's going to be, this is how great of a county it is. You know, we show that we, this is a family-friendly place. This is a place to, you know, raise a family, settle down, retire, do whatever, you know, what makes Elbert County great is the, you know, just the amount of amenities, you know, from that western lifestyle to having, you know, recreation like golf courses and trails and things like that. So, when a, when a business owner wants to move to Elbert County, they have to be sold on like, this is a place for me to live and it's also a place where my family can thrive. And so, that Elbert County living is going to be that showy brochure page within the website. How we help, again, I think that's just kind of a breakdown of, you know, all the ways that Mark can help out, but also what other types of grants and funding are available for businesses. And then the find property, this is the last, first level of navigation there, and essentially the find property is going to be what that, you know, we're going to be able to either, initially, we're going to work with a existing website platform that has a property listing of all the available properties in Elbert County. But what we're going to do is, we're going to move into something that's a little bit more automated, is updated, and so that would be a third-party application, but that's phase two of the website of really developing this find the property page. Now, if you go, if you scroll down a little bit, you'll see that we have this Greek text here and it says Lauren Mipsen Doloresit. So, that's basically, you know, that's going to be kind of a combination of some of the key messaging. So, we're going to, we're going to put out that really personal message of like, you know, we are, we are a team that meets your needs when it comes to developing your business or bringing your business to Elbert County. So, it's going to be that kind of feel-good statement. It's going to be a call to action. It's really going to entice people to kind of want to learn more. So, if you look to the right of that Greek text, you see an 86%, 110K. So, this is going to be the kind of mini infographic piece. This is what everybody is pretty, they can relate to. So, if we look at 80% of, 86% of something, you know, that could be the population with the college education or, you know, the types of properties are designated for this. The 110K, that could be the amount of available acreage within the county, 34K acres. So, we're just going to find what these key figures are to add to these infographics with this particular section here. Now, I just, if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind just checking it. Are you, is everybody hearing me okay? Is this, I want to make sure I'm kind of following along the lines of how you're going through this PDF, this slide here.
Yeah, we're tracking with you, so.
Okay, great. I feel like, I really feel like I'm fine and plodding here. I hope, I hope everything looks good on your end. But as you can see with, you know, this section, you know, the infographics are really going to be pretty crucial. It's going to be that part that's really going to help sell Elbert County. We wanted to add a little bit more of that western character too, but also have that modern, you know, it's kind of this metal, brushed metal look here in the background. Now, if you scroll down, we have the success stories and what you'll see are these three columns and one has the water tower in the middle there on the eyes of golf course. But essentially, this is going to be one of your most important features of the homepage and that's why we wanted to make sure that it, that it was up front and on the homepage here. Success stories is going to lend the most credibility to Elbert County. You know, as commissioners, you can talk about how great Elbert County is when it comes to bringing your business or expanding your business, or Mark can tout the advantages of Elbert County. But as a business owner, you're not going to be 100% convinced. I think what's going to convince you more than anything are your colleagues. So, if there are current successes within the county coming from existing businesses, that's going to sell them more than anything. And so, what we like to do is, we like to showcase and put these successful business owners up front, to help tell their story, to give a testimonial. With these stories and testimonials, you're going to see a lot more engagement because, again, if they can see a business that they could partner with, they're going to reach out to them. They're going to, they're going to call them up and then say, okay, so you're warehousing, you know, I do processing. Is there a way that we work together? What's it like working with the county? And so, having these, these existing business owners are going to help sell Elbert County and they're going to do a much more successful job. So, part of this, part of this marketing plan is we're actually going to be going out to six different business owners. We're going to be doing short interviews, developing really nice quotes from them and testimonials, and then putting these success story case studies and then having a nice photo to align with that. And so, that's, that's going to be, when we're looking to launch, we'll have these, we'll have these up. So, I think in probably the next month or so, I'm going to be dropping back down and getting some video and photography of these local business owners. And so, what we hope is, is right now, we have three on the page here. We're getting six up front, but when you see that see more stories button at the bottom there, that's going to take you to the full round of success stories. So, right now, we're looking at six, you know, maybe a year from now, there's nine, 12. So, just as many as we can start to populate. And this also lends content for the newsletter that we'll be developing. So, every newsletter could just be a success story. We can tell that story of, you know, how successful they were when they moved their business or they expanded their business in Elbert County. If you scroll down, we have the map. So, you know, what we're looking at is essentially, we're giving, we're giving the viewer on the website a good 10 seconds just to see where Elbert County is located in Colorado and all the nearby amenities and cities, towns, airports. So, we just want to give everybody a glimpse. Now, if they really want to kind of get in the nitty-gritty and look to see, you know, what other types of industries and businesses are in Elbert County, that's when we really do encourage reaching out to Mark and then also adding some more detail on the interior pages. But this is basically just to show that, you know, Denver's only 52 miles. It's a little over an hour by travel. Centennial Airport's 30 miles. It's about 40 minutes via car from Iowa. So, I, trying to show that everything is close by, making it look as if Elbert County's more centralized in the state. I mean, it somewhat is, but at the same time, like, I think, showing that there still is that proximity to the mountains, to recreation, to transportation, and then showing some of the key cities within, or the key towns in Elbert County as well.
Hey, Ryan. I know it's all work in progress, but on this one particular, could you shift it a little enough to capture Lyman and indicate the Port St. Plaine Highway that kind of runs north to south through there? That's a pretty big western regional trans hub that is kind of missing off there.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and I think, you know, we could pull the map over at Lyman, at the highway hub and then it's still, it'll make Elbert County, again, look a little bit more, even more centralized too, so, absolutely.
Thanks.
What is the, what is, and I'm sorry, what is the state highway number?
It's 71 that comes up, but it links down into Texas and eventually to the ports down there and terminates up, rolls through into Nebraska. It's a multi-state project. The Colorado is actually a little behind all the neighboring states in improving that north-south connection, but it's something they've been continuing to strive for.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think if that is, Ed, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know enough about it, but yeah, I would definitely add that and then we could just make sure that we do that by mine as well.
Yeah, if you just kind of... Yeah, if you just kinda, if you Google Ports to Plains, it, it'll give you a lot of background on that.
Ports to Plains Highway, okay. And then, uh, if we scroll down, uh, we just have the, the call to action. I'm just trying to encourage people just to, to reach out to Mark. I think it's really important to, you know, have his photo to make it easy for people to call or email him. Um, this is gonna be on most pages. So we just wanna make sure that, that, you know, af- after people kinda go through an interior page, they scroll down, they're gonna see Mark, they're gonna wanna, to, to connect with And, um, in the footer there, we have the subscriber news. So then, you know, essentially, it's really important for us to build our newsletter subscriber list. Um, that's gonna be one of our core, uh, core marketing conduits just because it's gonna be current, um, it's gonna be of interest and, and relevant to who we're sending it out to. Um, so it also shows that we do have an engagement. So we can, you know, if we can build a list of a, a few thousand people over the next year, um, we can see that, you know, roughly twenty-five percent of them are reading the newsletter regularly. Um, so those are really important, um, that's really important data for us to know that we're actually successful and what information that we're sending out there. Now, as you scroll down, um, we have, you know, essentially that, that, that second page there, um, that has the, the hero banner image as well. Um, it doesn't have any tagline over it or anything like that. Um, so what this is, and this is something that we developed with our, uh, content management system, is we call it, you know, essentially a Frankenstein page. Um, it has a bunch of different sections and it gives the, the person, i.e. us and Mark, to add content, to move different sections around, just dependent on, um, the content that we have for each page. So if this were the doing business page, um, we would probably just have the page headline that would say, "Doing Business," and then an intro paragraph that just says, "Why, uh, Elbert County's a great place to do business." And so this isn't, this isn't really reflective of the doing business page. This is just reflective of all pages. So, um, we have, you know, I think probably about six, seven, eight sections, maybe even more on this page. And what we might do is if we develop this doing business page, it might just have four of those eight sections. And so this just gives, this just allows Mark to have, uh, a lot of flexibility of how he wants to develop that page. And so if you just scroll down, um, you know, we have resource links, we have, you know, what the, how the content will actually appear, um, when we wanna tell a, a much longer story. Um, room for really nice photos. If you scroll even further down, we have the development spotlights. Um, these are gonna be really crucial as well. So I think really kinda, as there is a development underway, you know, we can talk about the, um, you know, this again is part of that credibility piece, is we can talk about the development, um, we can talk about the size, we can talk about the actual project design and construction, uh, timeline, that kinda thing. So anything that, anything that really kinda inspires new businesses, say, hey, there is growth there. There's, there's three, four, five, six developments going on right now within the county. Um, I, you know, it will inspire them to, to reach out. And if you scroll down, there's that red section, um, where it says preferred medical products. So, uh, again, this is the testimonial piece and when we go out and get those interviews, this is just one way that we'll use that quote. Uh, so these are gonna be really kinda nice just to sprinkle throughout the website if we just have a really, really nice quote. Like, you know, if it is in relation to, um, just having those resources from the Economic Development Department, they, you know, the, the business owner could say, you know, Elbert County was there every step of the way. They provided me with, um, applications for grants and so on and so forth. So I think those are gonna be pretty crucial just to kinda tout how great Elbert County is to work with. As you scroll down, there's the news section. And again, that's any kinda news. You know, i- i- it just feel-good news. It's, um, stuff that is just revell- relevant to any type of, uh, business within the, from the county. Uh, as you scroll down, video type, uh, the video piece right here, that's gonna be a video gallery. Um, that's probably gonna be phase two. I think when, when we start telling those video stories, uh, this is, this is where we live. So you could tell those video stories of local business owners. We'd have them interviewed, maybe like thirty-second pieces where they're just talking about, um, their business, what it's like to do business in Elbert County. And if you scroll down, uh, again, you have those infographics. So depending on the actual interior page, um, these infographics would change. So, you know, if you're looking at, uh, find a property, um, these four square modules here could all be reflective of, um, you know, agricultural property to, um, property with built in, infrastructure, you know, just breaking down the different types of property that's available. And then if, if we do, um, you know, resources, if it's like the doing business page, maybe it's just like, you know, ten, ten grants that are available, um, within the county and the state that, you know, something. So it's all, it's all just depends on, uh, you know, the, the actual interior page of what that content will be. So that's, that's where we are right now. So the goal, um, with the website is, uh, right now it's with our programmers. Um, so this, the design phase is completed. Right now the design, the programmer's working on it. And then Mark and I are meeting next week. We're gonna start to input the content. So we're gonna go through the website. Um, I think we're dedicating Tuesday next week just to start getting this. So it's in beta form, um, and it'll be ready to go live pretty soon. Uh, so we've been moving pretty quickly on this, but again, what we wanted to do is we wanted to bring the commissioners here together just to, to see our progress, what we're doing. Um, and if you have any questions with regard to the site, if you think that there's things that we could add, um, or anything that we could talk about, uh, that's what we were hoping to, to achieve this morning.
I think you got any comments or questions? Yeah, I know it's a, it's an awful lot to take in and, you know, when you're starting really from scratch in terms of, of an economic development department and what we want it to do for the county. And I think we, I think those top three things you hit that we're opening, open for business. We wanna connect to new businesses and, and foster the current ones. Or I think you've, you've hit the big, big pieces there. And then I think, um, I know Mark wanted to be here today, but had another appointment that he couldn't get changed. So, um, but I think just as we roll through this to really focus on the fact that we, we do have a big workforce and it leaves the county every day. So, um, if we can turn a little bit more of that inward and be a little more self-sufficient, um, we've gotta get, we've got a big market. But again, they leave the county and do their shopping elsewhere. So, I mean, I think getting all of this together and doing it right, I mean, I know it's a, a big chunk to start, but, um, I, I think it's moving in the right direction. Um, again, we've done a lot of things over the years that we've done fast, but not necessarily well. So I think marching through this thoughtfully is, is definitely gonna pay off, uh, bigger dividends. Would ask if, if there's any, um, public comment on this while we've got you on the line, sir? Yeah, if you could at the mic just so, Ryan, can you hear you on the phone at the other end?
My name's Gary Dickinson. I don't know if you can hear me okay?
Ryan, can you hear?
Um, one of the things I noticed is that, uh, if I was bringing a business to, to Elbert County is what resources are available, like internet. Um, how do I get water? Some of these sites are not in town or, or near water. So the resources that you need to conduct business along with employees that are available. Um, so how many houses are being built means more, you know, employees or possible employees. But, yeah, if I, internet's kind of a big one. I don't know if there's work being done on like that in the county, but that is a big drawback that I know of for people wanting to move here and businesses wanting to move here.
Yeah, thank you for that. Cause I know Mark has been digging deep into the broadband piece, what's available, what might be coming, and then how do we encourage, um, broadband to hit some of the places in the county where, you know, it might not be initially economically feasible, but, you know, can we pull together state or federal grant monies to at least get a backbone of something in? Cause, um, and we found that with, with a lot, I mean, it's the, the rural nature of the county. We, it feels like we've got a lot of people moving in, but overall to have a sustainable market for folks to deliver services to, we're still pretty lightly populated. And so those are good comments and I appreciate them.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and, and, and Gary, thank you for that. We, we definitely are planning to address all those. You know, obviously, um, you know, some of the things that you talked about when it comes to available properties, what type of infrastructure leads up to the properties. That is gonna be essential in, when we do the find a property interior page. Um, and then, you know, as far as like the housing availability, um, you know, that is, that is kind of a hot button issue right now within the county. So we are gonna address that as well within the website, what, what the available properties are, um, average home cost, that kinda thing. Um, when it comes to, you know, broadband, um, fiber and, you know, any type of internet access, um, I mean, that is gonna be something that is, you know, usually some, one of the top five questions any new business will ask is, you know, do you have fiber? Um, when you say no, it, it hurts. Um, but at the same time, uh, Elbert County is not alone with the rest of the state. We're in Colorado, we're just so far behind fiber infrastructure. So it's something that is definitely worth talking about on the website. How to address it, we're not sure yet, but I think that's something that we would want to.
Yeah, and I think the final one would just be, you know, as we focus images and others, I mean, our, you know, we're hoping to bring in business and employment, um, and not necessarily just continue to be, um, growing as a place for Denver workers to live. Um, I mean, there's a place for all of it that's going on, but the, the real focus, um, that brought Mark in was really to bring those, those businesses to the county. So, thanks. Um, Ryan, if you had anything to wrap up, um, the time's yours and, and we've got some other items we've gotta get to on the agenda, but I do appreciate the, the, um, kinda asthmatic check on where you're at. So, thanks.
Yes, thank you. And I, you know, I appreciate your time. Um, you know, the only thing I, I, if you had a few extra minutes after I get off the phone here, um, I sent Dallas a, a link to, it was a video, um, link that shows, uh, some of the, uh, drone footage that we had shot. So if you have, uh, a few minutes, you can watch that. It's pretty nice. Um, but, uh, no, I mean, as far as like, you know, moving forward, we're heavily focused on this website. Um, the other pieces of the marketing plan when it comes to building a subscriber list and newsletter, um, that LinkedIn presence, all that, that's, that's gonna be shortly after we get this site up and running. We just wanna make sure that we have a base solid foundation to bring people back to when they wanna find out more information. So I appreciate everybody's time and, and thank you. And, uh, yeah, we look forward to getting this live and, and, uh, a little celebration. So thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Alrighty. Uh, next item we have up was a update on the 2022 budget.
Good morning, Commissioners, Sam, Albrecht County Managers. Uh, just kinda an update of where we are in budget. We have finished our, um, collection of potential revenue for next year. We've moved into the expense stage as we start. Uh, we've asked all the departments to give us their expenses, what they think they're gonna have for 2022. Uh, we should be able to get all those, uh, and that's due by the tenth of September. Uh, we'll hope to have an internal draft, uh, and completed by nine-twenty. We'll have another meeting after that. And then potentially a BOCC study session on the budget on the thirtieth with a draft budget deadline of October fifteenth. We still believe we're gonna meet that fifteen October deadline. It's gonna be tight, but we will make that for sure. Um, and the, just kind of, uh, that's kinda the status. We're on schedule, um, and deliver that draft budget deadline on the fifteenth of October. And then we will have the final budget prepared and there'll be another, um, there'll be a public, um, meeting on the budget, on the draft after that fifteen October deadline. And then the final budget will be the middle of December. We'll have that done. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any questions or comments? No, thank you. I know it's a, it's a slog every year to, to work through, but, um, yeah, just that. Do we have any public comment on this item? If not, thanks and we look forward to seeing you on the fifteenth of Okay, so next item we have is the, uh, discuss the acceptance of, of some pieces of Augusta Loop, understand?
Commissioners, Rory Hale, Director of Public Works. Um, this is kind of a housekeeping, um, item. We've been working on this for probably the good past four years. Uh, we worked with the developer and the Metro District in Spring Valley Ranch and the original part of Spring Valley Ranch. Um, Inertia provided them with some guidance as well as staff, um, and their own consultants to bring Augusta Loop up to a satisfactory condition. Um, those repairs have been completed. It's roughly, not quite seventy-five hundred feet of road of Augusta Loop. We wanted to at least focus on the primary collector within the subdivision. Staff was involved in the inspection process. Uh, we feel like we've got a, a lot better road at this point. Uh, the developer, the Metro District in particular submitted a letter requesting that the BOCC consider formal acceptance of the road so that Road and Bridge can begin legally maintaining it and, uh, providing snow removal operations. So I think the intent of this was just to have it as a discussion item. If you had any questions and then if it'd be your pleasure, move it to, uh, action item as a resolution.
Questions or... When was the road originally put in? I don't know. It's quite a while.
Two thousand, early two thousand, two thousand, two thousand five or six.
Okay, so just one of those that over time the county didn't, I think they're, the way our process works. I know we were kind of, had a process at the point where we really weren't monitoring from the county side timelines. We were dependent on the, the contractors to come to us. So, and I know that's changed quite a bit over the last few years.
Yeah, the, and just, just so you know, the process, um, in the, the, uh, public improvement specifications required that, um, once complete, the developer requested initial acceptance. That's at the point in time where the warranty period would begin. Um, prior to the two-year warranty period, the developer again was required to contact, um, Road and Bridge to do any final inspections and then make a final, or make a, a formal request to the BOCC for formal acceptance. And yeah, it's, uh, there were some balls dropped. So, you know, we're, we're trying to get, on the staff level, we're trying to get, uh, to the point where we're at a minimum, we're flagging these prior to, um, roughly within, I think, four to six months of the two years, just as a courtesy to remind the, the developers or the Metro Districts that, hey, your two years is coming up and you're gonna have to, um, contact us, do, do any inspections that are necessary and/or bring up the condition of the road so it couldn't go through formal acceptance process.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So, um, if we don't have anything else, we can either just roll this on to consent at the next meeting and have it done at that point. Just let us know if anything comes up between now and then on, on this one.
Okay.
Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rory. Seeing none. Um, back to you, Sam, with the, uh, business and nonprofit grant program under ARPA now, I guess, versus CARES.
So Commissioners, this will be our third round of small business and nonprofit grants. As you mentioned, the first round was CARES Act funding. The second was special funding from the state for a select-
The second was special funding from the state for a select business types. They call the Small Business Grant Program. And then now we're at the ARP funding. We're able to, we're looking at about $200,000 total in the pool. Grants up to $10,000. We're already getting applications out. We've posted the information on the website and social media, and I believe the papers are going to be putting out some information also on this. We're going to take applications until the end of the month, and then we'll rack and stack them and, and see what kind of response we got. Again, this is business impacts or nonprofit impacts due to the COVID emergency. And there's, it's a lengthy application, but we haven't had anybody say it's too long. So we're in, in good shape there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Questions or comments? Yeah, I just think it's been interesting as we've moved through this, where we had businesses that were shut down and couldn't make money. Now we've got businesses that are open that can't get employees because of other decisions that have been made in relation to COVID, preventing them from being fully, fully open and profitable, so.
We are looking at, at impacts in the 21 timeframe, because we can have the year-end, the, the tax reports for that. We will probably also consider a future one if we continue to see low employment and businesses closing certain days of a week, or that we hear from the business community that we need a fourth round. I would bring that forward out of that ARP money to consider that in the future. But right now, this is for business and nonprofit impacts in the, you have 20 and, and the 19th, late 19, early 20, or throughout the end of 2020 timeframe.
Yeah, I know you had a very successful kind of first meeting, getting together all the nonprofits in the area. I think there's another one.
We did, that, we called it Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and we actually learned quite a bit, and, and I think we have some good collaboration between the, the nonprofits and the county offices that help those nonprofits, it was similar missions or back each other up. And, and so I think we're going to see some synergy out of that. You know, we, we heard from the nonprofit community that they were feeding a lot of people, that they were getting increased requests for services. And so we have made sure in both Phase 1, we couldn't do it in Phase 2 because of the state restrictions, but in Phase 3, those nonprofits can come and now ask for up to $10,000 to continue to, if it, you know, if, an increased demand due to COVID is a qualifying piece of this and would, would make them eligible for these grants.
Thank you.
And then the next one, you know, you're right, Commissioner Richardson, is that the 15th of October is our target date to have that next Neighbors Helping Neighbors group meeting. We're going to try and do those quarterly, I think.
Yeah, I appreciate that, just kind of that next meeting to kind of see how everybody's doing in relation to. Like I said, there were a lot of folks, depending on what jobs they had, that weren't impacted at all. Others recovered really quickly, but I know there's still a big population out there they're serving that's still struggling, so if we can help, that'd be good. Thanks. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, the next item we had was just our way ahead on the requirements for the Justice Center.
Commissioners, as you know, we, we pushed hard to consider a ballot initiative, to consider a ballot initiative for the November election to fund improvements to the Justice Center, including the jail, courts, sheriff's office, potential coroner's facility, and some increased space for emergency management and IT since they're co-located over here. We decided not to go forward with that ballot initiative, but the planning and the need hasn't changed. The need is, is still there. So the next step is to kind of reassess what the plan would be going forward. Maybe do some polling of citizens to find out what's the most important to them and how a ballot initiative would go over if it was phrased as a type, you know, along these lines A, or along these other lines B. And so that's the next step. We're, we haven't set that meeting yet, but we're hoping to have that set up soon. Be happy to take any direction or answer any questions you guys have on that.
There's no question that the Justice Center facility needs to be updated, upgraded, and done. But one thing, when you have a ballot issue, and I've been through those before with the 1% that the Public Works gets, is that you have to have a complete presentation and presentation to the public so that they understand the need and the, the facts that everything is well-planned.
Thank you, Commissioner, you're exactly right. We need a comprehensive story of how we got where we are, what we need right now, where we're going, and that was part of the reason for the delay on that ballot initiative is we did not have time to prepare that story and get it out to the public and, and plan a series of meetings with the public to answer any questions that they have.
I think we need to make, get a workshop here fairly soon with the sheriff's office so that we can get on the same, so that everybody understands where we are and we have the same story rather than having some of this divide that we've had.
That'd be great. I'll just get that set up. If, after the 15th of October would be better for me, since that's my budget deadline. But around that timeframe, I think we'll have plenty of time to get that done.
Yeah, and I think just bringing in the coroner, the courts, DA. There was a lot of good work done to determine the requirements, but I think the solution may not, I mean, we may have been presented the absolute right solution, but I think kind of taking everybody through what the right solution is in a way that, you know, we can ensure the public also understands or has confidence that this is the right, cheapest, adequate taxpayer solution to, to the requirements that have been identified as important. Having all those folks around the table at the start is, is critical, so we don't.
I've queued up the investment team, investment advisors, as well as the law firm that wrote the ballot question to start trying to have that meeting as soon as possible. I've also, we, we ran through six states with the 18th Judicial to get them out here and not only talk about their 2022 budget plans, but also their 23rd judicial plans and their future court needs. So they've not been able to, we, we just don't have a good date with those guys yet. I think we will invite them to that public work study session as, and encourage them to come, but we might have to have a separate meeting with the courts or the current 18th Judicial to kind of see what their requirements are, but we'll factor them into the, the overall story that we were talking about.
Well, we do hold some of their purse strings, so if it comes to, to that, we can, we can get a, a time, I'm sure.
Yep.
Thanks. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to action items. Thank you, Sam. First item we have is a public hearing for the Elizabeth Area Chamber of Commerce. It's a special event liquor permit for their Pints in the Pines event on the 18th of September. Entertain a motion to open public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open public hearing on the Elizabeth Area Chamber Special Event Liquor Permit for Pints and Pines.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to enter public hearing for liquor permit for the Pints and the Pines. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Dallas, we have the paperwork, everything seems relatively in order, so. Dallas indicates all the paperwork is in order. Okay, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and I would entertain a motion to approve the permit as submitted.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Elizabeth Area Chamber Special Event Liquor Permit for Pints in the Pines.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the permit as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I would take a motion to close public hearing on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing on this item.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We are, we have a public hearing to consider our next item, approval of the August 24th, 2021 special meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the August 24th, 2021 special meeting minutes and dispense with the reading.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes of the August 24th special meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Last action item we have is approval of the regular meeting minutes from August 25th.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the August 25th, 21, 2021 minutes and dispense with those reading, with the reading of those minutes.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 25th, 2021, and dispense with the reading of the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alrighty, board planning. For, I know, not our next meeting, but I think, yeah, unless you'd said the first meeting of October, you wanted to bring us the proposed Commissioner District maps. Okay. Okay, yeah, I get that teed up. We'll have the, along with other regular consent items, we'll, we'll have the acceptance of the Augusta Loop segment set up. You have anything else teed up, Sam, at this point? And we'll work on the, schedule on the study session on the Justice Center. Anyway, that, that'll get us going. We do have an item at 1:00 PM here. It's going to be a continuance for a land use item, Mountain Heart Woodworks. They've got some things they need to work through still with the fire district, so. We're going to recess now, it's 10:02, and we'll reconvene just to handle that continuance at 1:00 PM at this location, so thank you for your time.